There we are, we are on the air. And so, the first item is a roll call. Eight members are present, one member is excused. That's Alderman Lysick and Alderwoman Grisham is also excused. She will be coming soon, she's just a little late. And can I have an approval of the minutes of the September 19?
What's the approval?
Seven.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And then, item two is a discussion regarding the presentation by K.L. Energy and the progress of the lighting replacement program and projections for future funding needs.
Thanks very much.
Yes, thank you.
I do have some hard copy printouts if anyone's interested.
And please introduce yourselves for us also.
If you want one.
Yes, please, thank you.
Would you like one?
Yes, please.
Tell us whether you are K or L.
I'm the J. I'm a spoken liar.
Yeah.
Anybody on this side? Hope you guys can see. Tomorrow.
Okay, well, now I'm gonna take ones.
Alright, so I'm Jake Joy with K.L. Engineering. I'm the project manager for the street lighting improvement project. We've worked with the city of West Dallas since 2019. We're retrofitting and replacing the existing street lighting systems, which are high voltage systems. We did a presentation back in 2019 to kind of kick the project off, come up with an implementation plan, and figure out how we're gonna go about this. I do recognize some faces, but I understand there's been some turnover too. So, our goal here is to kind of tell you guys where we started, where we've been, and where we need to go with this project. I've also got Tony here, who is my field manager. He's also been with us since 2019 working on these projects. So, the agenda for what we're gonna talk about, like I said, we're gonna give a recap of, I'm not really sure where the best place to stand here is, but... A recap of that planning study back in 2019, just to kind of let you guys know how we got to where we are. Talk about what we've done over the last five years. Talk about the results from those and where we need to go, the recommendation going forward. Can you just do this? There we go. So, from that planning study, we kind of identified a few different reasons why the streetlights need to be replaced. For those of you who don't know, you have predominantly high voltage series lighting, which operates at 4,800 volts, give or take, which is extremely high, much higher than your standard electric services. Number one factor of that is safety. I don't know if you guys have seen recently in the news, in Milwaukee, they also have high voltage series lighting. They had an issue not too long ago where there was a short in the pole. The pole became energized, the dog died when it touched it. It's very possible, it's not likely. But that 4,800 volts is a lot different feeling than 240 volts. So, number one reason is safety. Not just for the public, for contractors working on it. Don's crew out there, for any contractors that solicit bids that have anything to do with the electric. That voltage is very tough to work with, it's very tricky and very dangerous. From a maintenance standpoint, it makes sense to replace all these lights. Like I said, this is complex stuff, not everyone works with these. So, it's costly, time consuming to make repairs. And then, the materials that go into the high voltage systems are becoming obsolete. We have low pressure sodium luminaires, a lot of these, which is kind of what forced us into this conversion plan in the first place. Those lights can no longer be purchased, meaning when they go dark, we can no longer light the streets. That kind of covers the blackouts part as well. Bidding and getting people to actually do work on your systems is an instant issue. Like the high voltage work, not many people do it. So, previous to this implementation plan, when your city would go out to bid for capital improvement plan budgeting and try and get contractors to do this work, they weren't getting a whole lot of bids. In fact, I think there was quite a few projects that got no bids. And that's just because no one wants to touch it. So, that means Don's crew and the city of West Dallas forces need to be the ones who handle all the high voltage circuit decommissioning and that stuff. And that just adds cost to your city, takes away time from the work. It's just an all around big issue. And I touched on materials as well, we just can't find low pressure sodium luminaires, we can't find transformers to do easy bandaid fixes. There's just no good way to go about replacing these without a wholesale conversion. So, from that planning study, we determined that we need to replace low pressure sodium luminaires at a rate of 225 per year. And that is because in 2019, when we found out low pressure sodium luminaires were no longer being made, the city purchased pretty much everything they possibly could in back stock. I think they bought about 7,000 lights. So, we're kind of racing against the clock to what we have in back stock for how they get replaced, for when they run out. And that 225 became a magic number, where if we can convert that many per year, we should end up pretty much running out of our back stock as we've converted the last light to LED. Ideally, no lights go dark. Currently, we are kind of right between year five design and year six construction. We've been keeping pace for the most part. As you can see, that chart's supposed to flow all the way down to zero from both sides. So, to date, we've been doing a pretty good job keeping pace with what our goals are set out to be. So, the final part that came from that planning study was the recommended budget and what we've been going about using and utilizing for the last five years. That budget was set at $1.6 million annually. It includes engineering design, production, construction oversight, material procurement for city forces, because they are doing half the work, and construction costs for contractors to do the work as well. So, to kind of touch on that a little bit, city forces are converting about 50% of the circuits and then contractor forces are being advertised and bid for the other 50% that we need to do. So, in year one, we were able to convert the circuits shown here in red, F1, F5, D something in A3. City forces did A3 and F1. Contractor forces did D1 and F5. Total conversions were 197, and that was an annual cost of around $730,000. This was the same year that we did the implementation plan. So, every year going after this is when that $1.6 million kicked into effect.
And so, just one basic question. Luminaire, a luminaire is one light, is that correct?
One specific light, yeah. So...
Okay.
Right out here in the parking lot, this decorative one with the... Yeah, it's chalice on it, that's one luminaire.
That's one luminaire.
If you see him in the median with the twin arms, that's two luminaires. Year two, this is when the implementation plan actually took effect. We were able to convert quite a few more circuits. C3, D1 was finished, M5 by contractors, P3 by contractors. So, this was the first actual letting of a complete circuit reconstruction. We were able to convert 258 luminaires for a total cost of around $101.2 million. Year three, adding on to that, we're starting to, we're actually starting to see some pretty good compounding effects here. We're starting to get rid of some of our existing high voltage cabinetry, which is also a nice thing to get rid of those big green semi truckered boxes that are in people's yards. We're able to start kind of decommissioning those as well. Year three, we were able to convert 289 luminaires for a total cost of $1.3 million. So, again, year three, we're well ahead of pace. Average cost per luminaire, I have this listed for each year, over at around $4,000 per luminaire. And that's the combined cost of what the city forces are doing and what contractor forces are gonna pay. Now, year four. Again, this is a really good year. 309 luminaires, $1.6 million, just a touch over after final construction. But the total cost per luminaire, as you can see, went up to about $5,000 per. Every year, that's the cycle, everything's going up, as you guys are well aware. Material costs, labor costs, everything's skyrocketing right now. This year, we actually had to trim down our work because we weren't able to fit the budget. This year, we are currently in the process of converting 188 to a total of about $1.6 million. And that overall cost per luminaire has up to about $7,000 each.
Mr. President?
Sure, go ahead.
I have a quick with that cost, you know, $4,038, now 49, now 69. Is there, and maybe you'll get to this, so let me know if we will. Is any, can anything but be done proactively to, if a rate is good, to lock something in that we don't, again, if things keep going up, means the less are gonna get done, but the same amount of budget is being spent, which means that we're probably not gonna be on pace for a 13-year goal if we trend this way.
Correct. And the proactive thing that we've been doing is, well, I can't say we've been doing it, we've explored doing it, is locking in contractors for multi-year bidding. And that just hasn't really been able to materialize. Number one, we're kind of stuck with the annual budget, so we can't guarantee where the design's gonna be at the next year. They can't order the parts unless the design is done for that following year too, because they need to know how much conduit, how much wire, how many poles to buy, all that stuff. So, we've kind of run into a few roadblocks with that, but theoretically, it's, I think that would be a good way to go about it. And it's something that we're continuing to explore.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just answer.
Aren't we using the same design for lights for everything?
Correct.
So, when you say they have to wait for the design and stuff like that, are you talking about this, the materials that, for the design, like the length of wiring, stuff like that, or...
Correct.
Are you talking about the whole light?
So, a street lighting system has more components than just what you see. Obviously, there's underground conduit, there's wire, there's pull boxes at the corners to, you know, be able to pull wire in and out. There's the fixtures themselves that you actually see, control cabinets, all the underground infrastructure that kind of goes into that. You could probably come up with a rough guess, just based on size. But the number one thing that we're doing is evaluating existing systems and finding damaged equipment. So, we're replacing poles that are damaged, we're putting back poles that are not damaged. The poles that are getting replaced, we're trying to put everything on one side of the street. That way, we only have half the infrastructure. Right? So, if you have poles on both sides, we gotta run conduit and wire up both sides. If we get all the poles on one side, we only need one light. So, theoretically, we're trying to get all that done while also replacing all the damaged stuff. So, there's a little bit of give and take when it comes to how that actual design's gonna work out and what the final figures are gonna be. That is about the summation of where we're at today with years one through five. Any more questions?
How much of this is, how many of these conversions are part of new road construction projects? 10%? 30%?
That's a good question. If I had to put a number to it, I would say between 5 and 10%. We have been working with the city, and the city does select the circuits based on what's going under construction and trying to accomplish as much as we can with that. Some numbers that aren't included in here are outside road constructions that are not part of our conversions. Lincoln Ave is gonna be replacing some lights. I can't remember what the other streets are that are under construction now that aren't part of our areas, but if they impact the lights, and it's on a state highway at least, they will replace those. If it's on a local road, your forces will probably replace those.
So, a National Avenue was done as a state project.
That got replaced by the state.
By the state. And that's not, that's outside of the scope of what we're talking about?
That's outside of the scope of what we're talking about here. And it's not usually, it's like National Ave was not low pressure sodium. It was all high pressure sodium. So, those numbers, while it's great to get rid of those systems, those numbers don't help us with our low pressure sodium depletion.
Oh, okay. Well, if we took those out there, we'd put them in and save them.
Yes.
Are we, are we recycling as you, as you take out low pressure systems?
Yeah, yep.
Are we saving those pieces in case we need them later on, so they're going into our stash?
Whatever can be reused is, they're, excuse me, low pressure sodium is on a three-year recycle. After three years, they're pretty much garbage. Whether they actually burn out or not, they're gonna burn out in a couple of days, a couple of months, whatever it ends up being. But whatever can be saved is, and we are selecting circuits based on that recycle period as well, that three years. So, we're only trying to focus on circuits that are due for replacement. That way, we're not wasting something that's got two years of life yet. So, the full kind of scaled results here. 7,100 LPS luminaires converted in the last five years. Overall, that's actually 2,000 luminaires themselves, or I'm sorry, we have about 2,000 remaining. So, we've, over five years, we've essentially gotten rid of about 37% of a third of the low pressure sodium luminaires, which is kind of right on pace with where we thought we would be, that 13-year, 15-year mark. City contractor forces will have converted 28% of all high voltage circuits. So, that gets into the underground infrastructure, the systems themselves, all the different high voltage systems you have, which is where that safety problem comes into play. 28% of that's been gotten rid of as well. Our average conversion rate over these last five years is actually 235, when we were targeting 225. So, we were able to make hay when the sun shined, which is a nice thing there. We've been able to completely remove a couple of substations, like I mentioned before. I don't know if this is a picture of one, it's not. But those nice big green eyesores, we were able to get rid of two of those. More coming hopefully. And we're down to about 3,500 LPS luminaires in back stock. So, that's what we have left to replace as these go out. Some of the results that we've been seeing from these, there are focus on energy rebates available, which provide such a funding to more efficiently light your streets or more efficiently do whatever energy related tasks you needed to do. Unfortunately, with low pressure sodium bulbs, they operate at a very low wattage, which is what the draw to them was back in the twenties and thirties when they were built. So, there's not a whole lot of energy efficiency being gained with them, so we're not really eligible for a lot of rebates at this time. However, once we're done with low pressure sodiums, our focus will switch over to high pressure sodiums, which are much higher wattage, and we'll see a lot more incentive that way. I believe, I don't know if I put the number on here, but it'll be on the order of like $25,000, $30,000 worth of conversions at that point. Maintenance savings, it's really hard to put a number on how these conversions are actually saving our maintenance crews and our city money, but there is a savings there, and it is valuable. You know, workload capacity, as I mentioned before, these old systems are tough to work with. Takes a lot of time, they're always breaking. As we can convert these, our city forces don't longer have to spend as much attention on them, they can start focusing on other things. Back stock purchasing, you know, as you questioned, we are harvesting whatever we can for systems being converted, so that is another benefit to doing these conversions, is that we have gained a lot of stuff that will help us in the future when it comes down to that kind of cut line of how do we finish this off. Let's see, materials cost. Low voltage LED systems, that's the modern standard. Everything's much more available, much easier to get, lead times are a lot lower, cost is a lot lower. Troubleshooting, you don't have to deal, that kind of goes back into the maintenance question. You don't have to do it, you don't use as much. And then, train in general, the high voltage, like I said earlier, is a very highly specialized sort of electrical skill. Not everyone has that. So, you can't just hire electricians off the street to come work on these systems. It takes time to get them antiquated and up to date with how to safely handle these. So, getting rid of these obviously is a priority, so... From a performance standpoint, the LEDs have a lot greater control of light. We can disperse it a lot evenly around the streets, meaning we get more bang for our buck, where the old low pressure sodiums just kind of throw light wherever it gets to. LEDs can really focus that on the roadways, the sidewalks, we can expand it wider or shorter. Could do a lot of things with LEDs, and really kind of tailor it to the neighborhoods that we're looking to replace these at. Dark sky compliance, if anyone is familiar, is kind of a hot topic these days, not putting unbalanced light up into the sky. There's a lot of migratory birds and things of that nature that are negatively impacted by light going up into the sky. LEDs, at least the ones that we're putting up there, are full cutoff, so we don't have that issue with those, or at least we're mitigating it as much as possible. We did go through an evaluation process with selecting these luminaires, and there's still probably a couple out there today where we got some samples, put them out, and tried to figure out which one we liked best, which one performed best for us. That's how we kind of selected that fixture that we're replacing everything with.
Yeah, none of them turned purple?
Not yet.
You say DOT had many that turned purple?
I like it. I do too on the freeway, I really like it.
Yeah, none of them turned purple yet. And then, the last thing is the smart capabilities of LED. If we ever want to implement that in the future, we can sort of bring in advanced controls for them, where we can dim them up and down. They're all set up for it, we just need to, for the city, we just need to invest in it. That's at no extra cost, that's just inherent to the LEDs. But it's there if it ever wants to be implemented. And honestly, that's kind of where the future's going in the next 10, 20 years anyways, so it's good to be set up for it.
And then, one issue also that I think us older persons are seeing is when the new circuit comes through, the streetlights used to be on both sides of the street, now they're on one side of the street.
Correct.
And that's obviously just because it's easier to put the fixtures on one side of the street and folks feel that they may have lost their streetlight. But I think that you look at that street with the new LEDs, and there's so much more light on the street. The LEDs lights are able to spread light everywhere over that street versus the old yellow lights. I think that everybody's getting light, and it looks really good.
The old lights were very hot and cold. Right underneath the light, you got a lot of it, but then as soon as you got away from that little area, it got dark quick. And then, so, I mean, like you said, this LED has dispersed light very well. There is a little bit of that where you move a light and people no longer feel like they have that light anyways, but the way these LEDs work, we can shoot it out into their yards. We've had a couple people say they want more light, we've had a couple people say they want less light. And we do our best to accommodate that as people feel their needs and that. This is just a big table kind of summarizing all those costs that we went through earlier. The trend that you can see here is that 2021 cost per luminaires for city forces, which their cost is essentially materials cost, their labor gets encumbered somewhere else, out of a different pocket, more or less. Material costs themselves have gone up from around $650 to $1,500. Over 100% increase in the last two years. Construction via contractors or advertised construction has increased around 50%. And I expect that to continue growing. Right now, that's kind of their uptick in material costs. I would expect their labor costs are gonna kind of start matching that here soon. But either way, we're seeing, we're seeing huge increases in just the total overall cost that it takes to do these conversions. This is projecting out 24, 25, 6, 7, 8. We're looking at upwards of $1.9, almost $2 million annual construction cost to hit that 225 luminaire mark. Now, these numbers are generically placed in here. Sometimes the circuits will have more or less lights, we can't really pick and choose exactly 225. We have to get as close as we can to that number. But if we were to just use those generic numbers, that's the total cost that we're looking at going forward every year, assuming inflation rates continue to be high for the next two years, which is the projection, and then kind of leveling out at more of a steady 2% after that. City forces, I believe I said this earlier, but they account for about 40 to 50% of annual conversions. We are assuming that that pace will be maintained. It's my understanding, and I think Don would probably agree with me, that we probably can't go much higher than that. We're kind of pushing them to the max right here with all their other responsibilities. I think they're, they're, they're pretty much at capacity with the amount of conversions that they can do in addition to what contractors do. So, bottom line is, construction costs are expected to exceed $1.6 million annually. We're looking at $250,000 to $450,000 per year. It's gonna depend on the year, it's gonna depend on inflation. So, our recommendation going forward then is to keep that pace. And in order to do that, we're looking for about $1.9 million now for the 25, 2024 construction season. So, obviously, this current construction season's underway, design for next year is underway. We need, we're looking for that budget to start the following year. You know, the whole point of this is going back to the 225 luminaires per year. Maintaining that is in our, you know, best advantage, it's in our best interest to do that. Slower we go, the more it's gonna cost us in the long run. The lights are gonna start going dark, we're gonna have to come up with bandaid solutions. It really is in everyone's best interest, or in the city's best interest at least, to try and maintain that level of conversion. Like I said, we are ahead of pace, which is a great thing. At the current pace, we're looking at 2033 for full conversion of the LPS luminaires, the low pressure sodiums. After that, we'll look at high pressure sodiums and try and get rid of those, finish off all that high voltage lighting. The problem is going to come in years, maybe 10, 11, 12, when we get down to kind of the remaining circuits that have only a few lights on there. It's gonna be really hard to hit those targets of 225, when each circuit only has 15 on it. It's really hard to convert parts of a circuit. So, in order to get those 15 done, we have to do pretty much the whole circuit, which means there's a lot of, I wanna call it wasted money, because it's all good and well spent, but it's really hard to start hitting those targets. So, the further ahead we can get, the easier it's gonna be in 10 years for us to finish that off and not go dark. And like I mentioned, city forces, we don't expect, we can't really expect that to increase. We're at maximum capacity with the amount of work that that force can do. So, the recommendation is for 1.9 for the following year. And then, rather than just setting that and letting it be, I think we should reevaluate it every year based on what the, you know, projected inflation is gonna be for the following year. That number could go up, it most likely would go up, could go down. There could be some scenarios where we're able to do some things like multi-year bidding and switch that up. So, I don't want to pigeonhole everything into that one number, but I think the consensus is that it's gotta go up from, it would be in everyone's best interest to go up from here, so... That is where we've been, kind of where we're at and where we need to go. So, any questions?
How long are the luminaires supposed to last?
They're rated for 20 years.
20 years?
They're just, the first LEDs that were on the market are just kind of getting to that level now. So far, I have not heard any major issues of just complete blackouts. The nice thing we have is we're on like generation 10 of the LEDs that are being installed now, so they're a lot better than that first generation. So, if they're rated for 20, they're probably gonna last 30.
Maintenance?
Five year warranty, yeah.
Okay, maintenance? Is there a lot of maintenance?
With the new systems?
Yes.
There's less. There's still always gonna be maintenance, you're always gonna have knockdowns. Drivers are gonna hit poles. There's gonna be shorts every now and then if water gets in the pull boxes and conduits. But in general, it's all new infrastructure. So, everything underground, which is where the maintenance headaches kind of come from, is, that should all be good well beyond the lifespan of the LED. We should be replacing the LEDs before we have to replace that.
Are our auditors handled the same? If one light goes out, the whole block goes out?
No, no.
No.
No. LEDs, we're running these in parallel instead of series. So, one goes out, everything else stays on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Oliver Vitale.
Yeah, I have a question in reference of, you know, when we come up with the agreement, you know, we're costing $1 million for 10 years. So, my question is, your company, when you approach the vendors for give some estimate, so per se, I don't know how many lights we have, 7,000 lights and 15,000, I have no idea, you know, at this point. So, why, why at that time when we made the agreement, why we can come up with a solution or a contract where we can order the amount of, I know it's a costly situation, you know, I mean, I understand that. But why then, and now we have to worry every year, the budget, because the inflated cost is going up? You know, why can't, we had something more wisely, I believe, to follow? You know, not just every year, well, we don't know what's gonna be next year, we don't know. So, we're talking about another five, seven years now, you know, we're talking about eight years to complete the project. So, so every year, we have to worry about how much is gonna be next year, how much is gonna be next year? Why, why we could have an agreement with a vendor, we're gonna order this many lights, and that's it? You know, some way or another, I mean, it could have been a waste to adopt that, you know, to... We had a big stocks, if it take them two, three years to produce them, or wherever they get them from, I mean, it should be. But the questions we're not, whatever tonight, like I say, I appreciate, you know, what you explained to us, why we have to worry about every budget, the escalations of cost. That's my biggest thing here. You know, I felt, I figured how many lights we had, well, we should order those illuminated bulbs, like, you know? I mean, but what we have to worry about for not the next five, seven, eight years, the price will keep going up, and it's gonna cost millions of dollars more.
Short answer to your question?
Yes.
COVID shook the market up, and you can't solidify bids like that?
Well, I understand that, that's the excuses of many within our today's system, that's what happened. That's what everybody's saying, you know, and I, and I sometimes, I kind of weigh that, you know? I'm not really convinced on everything, that part of the COVID caused all this... that part of the COVID caused all this disasters of cost, you know, on any level of, within our system, you know?
Your, the long answer to that is that COVID not only shook things up, but it created manufacturers to no longer stand by those locked-in pricing. They changed, they kept the hat with no regrets doing it, and didn't care who they did it to. They will no longer enter into those contracts, they're going to want to change their pricing yearly. They would not do that for us. The other part to that answer is that contractor forces are purchasing all their equipment from a distributor who purchases that from the manufacturer. So if the city wants to purchase everything, it's theoretically possible, but we have nowhere to store all the equipment. So the only way that we could lock in pricing directly for the contractor forces to do that work is if we were to purchase literally everything and just get a huge warehouse and store it for years.
Well, and we wouldn't have it in the budget anyway.
Yeah, we're already storing the stuff that we bought to last till the end of this, right? We're already pre-bought a bunch of the
All the yellow bulbs?
All the yellow bulbs.
Low-pressure sodium.
We'd have them, so we wouldn't run out.
The, the city, and the city is already purchasing the LED luminaires. The city purchases the poles, and they purchase the arms that need to be replaced with the, the damaged ones that we find out there. It's the conduit, the wire, it's miles of stuff that we're talking. And with contractors doing that work, it's nearly impossible. I mean, I shouldn't say it's impossible, anything is technically possible, but they would not enter into those agreements with the city directly, the contractors are doing the work.
So with these new LED fixtures, do bulbs burn out on LED fixtures?
There's issues with some, I think it's like one in fifty maybe have an issue.
Yeah.
They're five-year warranty, so if those issues do come up, they do get replaced, or at least they send us a replacement, and the city would be on the hook to replace it themselves, but.
But yeah, it's not like our yellow streetlights that burn out after three years, you got to put a new bulb.
No, you're supposed to get twenty years out of those.
Twenty years of them, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Yes.
I've no, noticed you said something about where we, we're going to have bulbs. We'll have lights on one side of the street in certain cases. How ea, and you were talking about how with the LEDs, it's easier to give more light or less light. How easy is that for, if we have people complaining that they just don't have enough light?
After, after they're installed, I think.
After they're installed.
After they're installed?
Yes.
It becomes more of a manual adjustment at that point.
And so changing the bulbs around?
We could replace the bulb altogether and put something lower out there. The easier solution would be to install a manual dimmer in the, the light pole itself, which then connects to the streetlight, and it's essentially like what you have in your house, just to dial, turn the light up, turn the light down. There's some labor involved with doing that. And then obviously, that light itself doesn't match the rest of the lights. But if it comes down to it, that is a solution that could be implemented.
I'm pretty sure you do evaluation before you say it's done, make sure there's plenty of light.
Correct.
So you could, so you go on that side to make sure there's more light, rather than worry about someone says there's too much light coming into the window or something like that?
Correct.
I don't mean to interrupt.
No, please.
You got, during designing, I don't do the design part, I'm out on construction, but the whole photometric layout of the streets and placing.
Okay.
Right, and then what happens too though, when we go out and build this with all the trees and stuff like that, we have to make adjustments, and then when the utility is there. You're sliding poles a little bit here or there, but we try to stay with the photometric layout that they went with. And the photometric layout also showed, Jake, basically, when you're talking about moving all those lights to one side of the street, there was not a whole lot of difference, right? Versus having, you know, we got a, a light pole here, a light pole here and here. Now you pull them all to one side of the street, there was not very little difference, right, with the photometric layout, believe it or not. And a, a lot of that, I, I believe, is, you know, it's people's impressions. You had a light pole in your yard, right? And that, that's a big deal, and now you don't, and that's where we see the people who had one, and now it's two doors down, you know, that, it's frustrating for them. Or the people who didn't have one and now have one, it's different, so it, but we're not seeing in the photometric layout a whole lot of difference there.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Thank you, that's excellent, thanks for everything you're doing.
Thank you all for your time, thanks.
All right, then, item three is a resolution to accept the proposal of Kiwi Architects LLC to provide architectural and engineering services for the design of the future Department of Public Works facility to be located at South Fifty-third Street and West Burnham Street. And before we go into closed session, is there anything for open session? Looking at, okay, then I'll, I'll read us into closed session. For agenda, agenda item number three, the committee may convene in closed session pursuant to the provisions of section nineteen point eight five one E of the state statutes for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the investing of public funds whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The committee may reconvene in open session after completion of the closed session to consider the balance of the agenda.
Motion to go on closed session.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second, Alderman Stefanski.
Aye.
Alderman Weigl.
Aye.
Alderman Roat.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keen.
Aye.
And I, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Gresham.
Aye.
And Alderwoman Reinkie.
Aye.
Alderman Vitale.
Aye.
And Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Okay, we are in closed session, and the chair votes aye, thank you, Marty.
Mr. President.
Yeah, yeah, okay.